There they are. There's your representatives there, uh... You ready, Michelle?
Yes, sir.
All right, it's 9:30 a.m., the 12th day of March. We'll open this record session in Commissioners' Court. At the Record Cell, Larry Holsey, John Curtis, Andy Chambers, Kenneth Wood, and Don Cranch are all present. He'll join us in the plexus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, John. Larry, would you leave some prayer? Hey, Susie.
Heavenly Father, thank you this day you give us. Father, thank you for the blessings you give us. Father, we pray that... We pray for the President, Lord, that you might touch his heart, that he listen to you, or send someone that would. We pray that you'll give us wisdom in this court. In Jesus' name, amen.
How you doing, Andy? All right, item number three, approve the minutes of the previous Commissioners' Court.
Showing three previous minutes on the February the 12th, 20th, and 23rd. I have no comment.
Does that sound good to you, Michelle?
Yes, sir.
Do I have motion to accept these minutes?
So move.
I have a motion by John.
Second.
Second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. That's five, four, zero against. Item number four, Linda Mallon, is she in? There she is. Come on up, Linda. She's going to do her presentation. Legal Services. Linda, would you make sure that that red button is on in front of you? There you go. Thank you, Mallon.
Good morning, everyone. I'm sure some of you have seen these signs around the county. This is... These are free legal clinics. About two years ago, I got a call from Texas Legal Services, and they were wanting to do free legal clinics for individuals who had limited means and for veterans. And so they had their first legal clinic over at the Mission Granbury, and we had 11 people sign up. This was last spring, and 11 people showed up for the clinic. Veterans or individuals that would like to take part in this, they have an opportunity to talk to a lawyer face-to-face, you know, through video conference, and it's completely private. We're offering that now. The clinic last year was so successful that they decided that they would have a pilot program and allow us to have... To allow Granbury to be their pilot program for a remote clinic. So we're going to have this once a month. It's open to the public every fourth Thursday of the month, except certain holidays, from 10 a.m. to 2:00. And that is going to be at Mission Granbury, and there's a phone number there. And then for veterans, at the Hood County Courthouse, and everybody knows where the courthouse is in the center of town, and that's for veterans only, from 9 a.m. to 11 a.m., and that's every fourth Friday of the month. They can sign up. They can register online at TexasLawHealth.org/events, and this saves time with the intake. The good news about this is they're going to be doing things like expungements. They can do discharge upgrades. They can do wills, powers of attorney, all kinds of things. So... And they're even going to have specialty clinics, where one particular month they'll be handling one type of legal issue. Another month they'll handle another type of legal issue. So we encourage... This is for Somerville County also, not just Hood County. So if anybody in Somerville County is interested, they want to speak to an attorney, you know, either sign up or call my office. My phone number is on the brochure, and we'll get you set up to speak to an attorney. So it's a great program, and, you know, Texas Legal Help got these funds. They got a massive grant from that VW emissions lawsuit, and so this is where the grant money came from to do this. So... And to have a monthly clinic is a great thing. Does anybody have any questions about the legal clinic? All right, I'm going to leave this...
Wait, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
If a veteran is disabled, do y'all work with trying to get them up there?
If the veteran is disabled?
Disabled and...
Yeah, we don't have transportation, unfortunately, to take a veteran to the legal clinic. But if they wanted to, call my office. We may be able to get them set up somehow.
Okay.
You know, let's see what... You know, we'll take those on a case-by-case basis and see how that...
Okay.
You know, see how that works. But get the word out to your constituents. You know, let them know that this is available, and, you know, we look forward to seeing them. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Monica. Judge Cockerdame, hello?
Yes, of course.
Item number five, discuss take action on the presentation by Kec. And I apologize, I don't know which lady's going to be actually making the presentation here today.
We both will.
Okay, good.
We believe in teamwork.
I understand.
Commissioners, Judge Chambers.
How you doing?
We're here on behalf of Mission Granbury, CASA of Hood-Somerville, and Holly is here on behalf of the Palaixi River Children's Advocacy Center. And we're requesting permission from the Commissioners to honor Child Abuse Awareness Month, which is April. And unfortunately, we have a very serious situation. We rank rather poorly in the state as... States... Excuse me, counties with incidents of child abuse and neglect. We... CASA would like to place flags on three sides of the square. Five flags per square... Per side. And Holly?
And the Children's Advocacy Center would like to display blue ribbons around the courthouse, as well as two large, six-foot wooden ribbons on the grounds.
I believe this is what we do, same as each year, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, do we have any questions?
Well, you just need to work with our maintenance department, make sure whatever we put in the ground doesn't affect our rampers systems, whatever, but inside of that.
I'm going to leave that job to one of your local residents, Jerry Preather. I think he knows the square quite well.
There you go. Good, too.
And he'll be in charge of placing it.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion if we approve the placement of blue ribbons for the period requested.
I have a motion by John.
You have a second.
A second by Don. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. It's five, four, zero against. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The person wanting to come up and help put up ribbons here.
Okey-dokey. We'll be right back.
All right, item number six, discuss take action receiving a .046 acre tract of land from Rafino Custom Homes Incorporated. Andy and Rafino's attorney has the warranty deed drawn up, ready to file, and the attorney's requested, Andy, that once we get it done, I'll send him a copy once Michelle files it. I know Kenneth's been over this. You probably have described it to the other ones.
Andy, did Mr. Martin get ahold of you the other day, the surveyor?
No.
All right, he's asking when he'd get his copy of the pile and back.
Yeah, we can try around and scan an email if the network's fine.
Okay. This is a little sliver of land in the soccer park that originally the property next door to it came down into our walking track. And Mr. Rafino approached us about letting us have some of that land where it's straightened up his deeds on his other property. So we've gone forward with that. So I make a motion if we approve the donation of the .046 acre tract from Rafino Custom Homes Incorporated.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
Second by John. Any further questions or discussion for Andy or Kenneth? All in favor said motion. It's five, four, zero against. Hey, Michelle?
Yes, sir.
You want me to just pass this down and rush the paperwork, maybe? If you don't mind, will you email that to me once you follow?
Sure.
And I'll get it to Mr. Martin. All right, item number seven, discuss take action on 2018 San Jacinto Day fireworks resolution. I believe this allows folks to sell fireworks from April 16th till midnight of April 21st, 2018. I don't know if our fire department's back there. I saw them outside. Dwayne, anybody have any problems with this?
No, sir.
All right.
Do we do this every year?
Yeah, it's getting more and more every year.
After they extended the days throughout the year, we have to approve each one.
It used to be... Yeah, this one we have to have back to them by April the 1st. Has to be approved for the state. So yeah, they start in the February, the April, and the May. It's fireworks. So do I have a motion to approve this from April 16th to midnight of April 21st?
So move.
I have a motion by John. Second. I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion?
But we've realized that we could, depending on drought conditions, come back in and...
Yes. Okay. We can cancel this anytime. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor said motion. It's five, four, zero against. All right. Item number eight, discuss take action on receiving open proposals for lot 5, block 4A. That is a 2.48 acre tract in industrial park.
We received one proposal. And that is from Kristen Karnes, Endless Discovery Child Development Center, LLC.
Do I have a motion to receive and review this RFP?
So move.
I have a motion by John.
Second.
Second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. It's five, four, zero against. Item number nine, discuss take action on receiving open proposal for lot 2, block 3, Gibbs Industrial Park. That is a 6.15 acre tract.
We likewise received one proposal. And that is from Texas Freight and Bellades Enterprises.
Do I have a motion to receive and review this RFP?
So move.
I have a motion by John. Second. Second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. That's five, four, zero against. Item number 10, discuss take action approving local agreements between Somerville County, the City of Glenrose, and Glenrose ISD for the May 5th, 2018, local elections. Have anything you'd like to say, Kristy?
I'd just like to talk about the early voting hours and locations. The last couple of times, the city has requested to have early voting at our location, and they have decided to stay with City Hall for their early voting location for this go-around. And the city's hours are going to begin on Tues... I'm sorry, Monday, April 23rd, through Tuesday, May 1st, from 8:00 to 5:00, except the first Tuesday and the last Tuesday are going to be 7:00 to 7:00. And the same dates for the school as well, except their hours are going to be 8:00 to 5:00, with Election Day being on Saturday, the 5th, from 7:00 to 7:00.
Do we have anything going on up here during that time?
Not that I'm aware of.
You have the school, the city?
Yeah.
Well, do I have a motion to approve their local agreements with the City of Glenrose and Glenrose ISD?
Yes.
I have a motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion for Kristy? All in favor said motion. That's five, four, zero against. Thank you again, Kristy.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Elena. Item number 11, discuss take action on reinstating fleet tracking software. John, I believe you're on the...
Yeah, I asked for this to be put back on the agenda. A couple of years ago, we had equipped county maintenance vehicles with fleet tracking software so that those could be tracked from a computer, mini-computers, whoever signed up to get on there. And due to financial considerations, I was told that that was dropped, and that's a $3,100 per year endeavor that allows us to keep track of where our vehicles are. It's a very detailed... Trying to think of the word. Accumulation of data on each vehicle, from speeds to location. It superimposes it on a Google Earth map, so you know pretty... Within a few feet of where these vehicles are, if they're idling, running, whatever. And it was... Couple of purposes for this was, one, to better track employees out in the field, knowing where they're at, and also during emergency situations, if we were... The... To track our vehicles for emergency response and recovery and logistics concerns associated with movement of these pieces of equipment or whatever around the county, should we have a need to do that, such as post-tornado or type of disaster. Fire Department has this same National Fleet Tracking capability, and I know that... I think the SO has a similar system, but not open to public disclosure, I believe. And this may be a budget item that we want to address with our upcoming budget, but I just wanted to throw it out on the table for discussion. Brady, since this primarily is associated with the group that you're working with, what's your feeling on this?
We... I mean, I think we just... We decided to give it up, try to save some money off the budget. But, you know, it's a good tool to have, you know, like you said, emergency. So I feel like if we had the money, we'll play back in place, so...
It's helped us a few times at Fire Department. I know that we had several different instances where we actually used it to prove out items.
Because we're already west of the Fire Department on there, we might be able to utilize it to maybe get a little bit better pricing, you know, putting it all under one single account or something like that, so... For just a number of vehicles.
Not that we need to take any action as a court today, but I think that we should, in my opinion, we should review that and, if possible, reinstitute that capability.
And the devices and everything goes with it? You want us to check?
We still have the devices.
Cool. We want to check to see what kind of deal we can get to go along with what we already have.
Absolutely. I'll look for a coupon and everything.
There you go. At least 10% off?
I'll try.
All right. So no action will be taken on that one. It's just discussion and round of research to see what we're at on money and what we can do. Thank you, John. Number 12, discuss take action on proving advertising seal bids for gas and oil.
Yes, sir. We've gone through three renewals, so we have to officially go on out. It's really kind of a waste of our money because we only have one bidder that comes back every year, and that's Lambert. But in order to stay in compliance with purchasing rules, we need to... I need permission to go out for bid.
Do I have a motion to approve advertising seal bids for gas and oil?
So move.
I have a motion by John.
Second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. It's five, four, zero against. Item number 13, discuss take action on opening seal bids for janitorial paper products.
We have four. On this one, the first one is from Empire Paper. The second is from Mayfield. Y'all usually like to know where the... Mayfield is from Stevensville, and Empire is from... They're based out of Wichita Falls. This one is from Baxter Chemical and Janitorial out of Stevensville. And the fourth and final is from Mesa Tech out of Glenrose.
Do you like a motion to accept and review these?
So move.
I have a motion by John.
Second.
I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. Five, four, zero against. Discuss take action on partial payment for annex flooring. What was turned in was for the tile and labor to remove the tile and re-level the floor in front of Michelle's office and y'all's highway. Highway. Hallway. Never mind, our text doc, don't you? Anyhow, the bill that he sent was $9,812.50 out of a total bill, $24,208.45. And I'll try to answer any questions, if we have any.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion to pay this partial payment for the flooring and the annex.
Second.
I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. It's five, four, zero against. All right. Approve the budget transfers.
We sent you an email. There was really nothing of huge expense or big things there. The only thing that really kind of stood out was a $25,000 transfer from contingency. And if you remember correctly, that is basically a loan to the Fire Department so that they can purchase the $25,000 in products because they're getting a $20,000 reimbursement grant. So when that $20,000 comes in, we will replenish the contingency fund that's on.
Yep.
Any questions for Brian? Do I have a motion to approve the budget transfers?
Yes.
I have a motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by John. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. Five, four, zero against. Back to Brian on number 16, approve remainder of county bills.
In addition to the $9,812.50 that you just approved, we'll also be paying $427,429.7, which was emailed to you gentlemen, and $19.50, which was reimbursed through payroll to Zach Davis.
Do I have a motion to pay the rest of our bills?
I have a question.
All right.
We had a couple of items on there that was advertising, where we spent quite a bit of money.
Yes, sir.
Can you kind of reiterate on that, too?
That's why the reporter... Well, I know one was taken off of an earlier email after it was sent because it's a probate that is going to be paid for by the attorney. So anytime an attorney can pay something, I'm really happy about.
One that I saw was Fossil Rim.
Okay, Fossil Rim.
The other one was like Metroplex something.
Okay, the Fossil Rim, if you remember correctly, we're partnering up and spending the hotel tax dollars with Fossil Rim to attend some of those events. And that was for the Spartan, the main Spartan event down in Houston.
Yeah.
And so that was our share of that. And then the other one, Commissioner?
Yeah, it was something in the Metroplex. I don't know whether it is Airport or...
Probably Airport.
Yeah, that's where they advertise.
It was several thousand dollars, for even that question.
Is that the DFW Links, $6,500?
Yeah, sounds like it.
Okay, that is also... That is a... That is an advertising contract we went into with DFW Links Magazine. They're going to be doing advertising for our golf course and all twelve issues, plus they're going to be doing a cover story on Glen Rose and the golf course here.
Where do those monies come from?
Hotel tax.
Okay.
Again, yes, sir.
Any further questions or discussion?
And I made sure that the cover story is also going to cover some of the bed and breakfasts in...
Yeah, you better.
I made sure. I made sure. There'll be a few pictures of bed and breakfasts in that article as well.
I think the motion will be paying bills.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
Second by John. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. It's five, four, zero against. Number 17, approve county treasurer's report. I have a motion by Larry. Is that what I heard?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I have a motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Don. Any further questions or discussion for Susie? All in favor said motion. That's five, four, zero against. Number 18, approve receiving monthly reports from all county departments. Yeah, not all, but most.
Remove the motion to accept county reports.
I have a motion by Kenneth to receive and accept the reports.
Second.
Second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion?
Yeah. Texas Jail Standards, I'd like to compliment the Sheriff's Department on the excellent report they received on their latest inspection down there. Good job, all involved, and thank you very much for that.
And we're also congratulated on that, too.
For funding it, right? Well, I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor said motion. That's four, five, four, zero against. At this time, it is 9:56. We're retiring to executive session to discuss sale of real property. Kristen, if you don't mind, would you stay behind? And Ms. Allen, would you mind just staying close, like in the break room somewhere? We'll bring you in as soon as we're done with Miss Karnes.
Do we have a treasury report up here, if you want to?
Susie's going to bring... Susie, she's going to bring them.
Do we have a treasury report?
Yes, I don't know why.
I got one, Susie. We can pass it around.
Okay.
Michelle, you tell me when you're ready. All right, it is 10:41. We'll reconvene in the regular session after a being executive session for real property. Do I have a motion on either one? The one you're reading, I think. I don't find that. Do you want to just award the RFP for the property? There you go. That's the vote here.
I'll make a motion that lot 5, block 4 Alpha in the Gibbs Industrial Park, we approved the agreement with...
Kristen Karnes.
Kristen Karnes on 2.48 acres.
I have a motion by John.
Second.
Second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion. That's five, four, zero against. That's the second one, Miss Allen. They're getting out of order, aren't you?
No.
It's listed on your agenda. Lot 2, block 3.
Number 9.
Okay, I got it. Okay, I also would like to make a motion that lot 2, block 3 of Gibson... Gibbs Industrial Park be approved for the agreements...
be approved for the agreements for Texas Freight and LNS Enterprises.
I have a motion by Larry.
No, it's John.
I'm sorry, John. I have a motion by John. Larry, you want to jump on now? Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion, Larry? All in favor, said motion. That's five, four, zero against. And ladies, like I told you earlier, give Andy about 10, 14 days to get paperwork together. I'll get ahold of you, and we'll get down to the clerk's office and follow all paperwork. Thank you, each one of y'all. Appreciate it. All right, at this time, what time is it? 10:44, we'll retire back into executive session on personnel matters. Dwayne, I know you're staying. I imagine the rest of these gentlemen are staying also? All right.
All right, it is 1:13, Monday evening, the 12th. We'll reconvene in regular session after taking executive session on personnel, and I think somebody has a motion to make. Which one are we going to start with? The deputy?
You want.
Deputy? Make a motion to approve the Sheriff's Department to hire an additional deputy.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
I have a second by John. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, said motion. That's five, four, zero against. You want to take a shot at that next one?
I'll take a shot at it. I make a motion to approve the road superintendent job description as written at this time, with the grade of being a 14.
I have a... Anything else to answer?
Yeah, there. And also appointing Brady Martin as temporary road superintendent until the first regular scheduled meeting in January 2019.
Sounds good. I got a motion by Kenneth.
I'll second that.
I have a second by Larry. Any further questions or discussion? Thank you very much. All in favor, said motion. That's five, four, zero against. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
You have a strong second.
Second by Don. All in favor. That's five, four, zero against at 1:15 p.m.
Don't ever.
One more thing to say, Don.
Yeah, I know. Yep, yep, yep.
She was working on it though.